Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting. It's January 9th, is special meeting of the Block 34 Task Force Report to City Council. I call the meeting to order. And I guess we'll just go to general orders. Mr. McNichol.
Sorry. Get my mic on. The Block 34 Task Force is here to present their findings to you, so.
Okay. And I do have to say one thing. Anybody who has questions or comments after the presentation, you may email to individual Task Force members. Each of the Task Force members' email can be found at Stillwater.org under the Block 34 Task Force. Okay? All right. Mr. Beckstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the opportunity to present our work to you. Let me just kind of remind everybody who's who. I'm Jim Beckstrom, Chairman of the Task Force, and Vicki Berry, Vice Chairman, Ariel Ross, Russ Tubner, and Kevin Fowler. So that's the Task Force that was assigned. We really appreciate the opportunity to be involved on this, and hopefully we've developed a product that will meet the needs that you've wanted us to meet on this. So we have an out -- this is an outline of how this is going to go. Everybody on the Task Force actually is going to speak to the Council. We prepared the presentation such that we'll be prepared for questions at the end. I think it might be best to wait because we've got a lot of material to cover, and if we get bogged down on the way, we'll never finish. So let's -- we'll just charge ahead here. The -- I'm going to open it up, and Ariel's going to talk about green space and the landscape. Vicki's going to talk about the aesthetic elements, the town hall, and the vendors. It's a bit of a duet, and I mean this in a very loose term, but Vicki and Russ are going to work through the market hall and the performance stage. Kevin's going to talk about financing, funding, and then I'm going to wrap it up at the end. So that's generally the sequence of how this is going to go. And there's probably going to be some interjections as we go. As, you know, strokes of brilliance come to us, we might be some interjections, so we'll see. We were given a charge to do three things: to come up with a site plan, to come up with costs, and to put together recommendations for financing. I would believe we've done all those things, and you're going to see our findings and our recommendation tonight. One other thing I will point out is we weren't supposed to do anything else, and it's not that we didn't want to, okay? But we tried to stay focused and as best we could. We were charged to work with a conceptual plan that was loosely developed by Sparks Reed in July. We took the elements to heart, and that's the essence of what we worked with. The Task Force met 12 times, including today. The first meeting was September 23rd, where we were trained robustly in open-meeting rules. Thank you, Attorney Dorman. But we hit the ground running, and within the first several weeks, we developed mission, vision, and values. And you'll hear more about that in a minute. But we wanted to get a course set early. We wanted to get a lot of work done, so we did -- we got schedules set, and we worked a plan to actually get this delivered by the end of the year. And we didn't quite make it, but we got close, so. They were open meetings. We had public comment in every single meeting, so there was an opportunity for the public to participate in every meeting that we had. And we invited that, and actually, we had several working sessions to where the folks that attended the meetings were involved in the working sessions as well. So it was -- we felt fortunate to have citizens input all along the way. We had lots of resources offered to us and available to us. I want to thank the city staff for the great support and work they did. We have subject matter experts in the region and also locally that stepped in and helped us out. Alan Brunken, the architect, helped us out a ton on the front end, helped us get our course set, and offered some great suggestions of how to get this thing done. And there were others. We developed a mission, vision, and values early to get our course set. I think if you just kind of get the essence of what these are, it's about inspiration, it's about inclusion, it's about culture -- got to get my glasses on -- functional, affordable, and sustainable. All right? Because we know that this thing's got to work financially, and you're going to hear more about that later. We took that to heart. It's not a trivial aspect at all. Under the guidance of Mr. Brunken, we took to the fact that we needed to get a little more specific. The mission and vision and values helped us frame, helped us create a vision, but what we really needed to do is go to the next level of detail and get some goals set. So we developed some goals that drove us to delivery. And this list that you're looking at here is the list of goals that we worked to. The elements were green space, a market structure, market hall is the topic, hospitality, food vendors, and a performance stage. It was also referred to as amphitheater, but performance stage is the element. That created a great palette to start from, but quite frankly, when you think about Oklahoma, there's some missing elements. And so we've got this other aspect of Oklahoma that is about natural resources and absolutely about energy. Oklahoma's an energy state. Oklahoma, to a great -- I mean, energy to a great extent influences what Stillwater's about, too. We did not want to lose that opportunity, so that's captured in what we're going to talk about and present to you today. It's about energy. It's about natural gas. It's about wind. It's about solar, about water resources, and ground source heat pump system. We're going to talk about that a little more in the energy section later. Stillwater is the headquarters for the International Ground Source Heat Pump Association. We did not think it would be appropriate to forget that, and we thought, let's just take advantage of what we do have and show the world some great stuff that we do here in Stillwater. We had Chairman Swank come and talk to us about energy, and when I get to the energy section a little later, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but they're doing some great things with solar. I guess another thing I wanted to mention about wind. Oklahoma is the number-three biggest wind producer in the country. We are number-three in total wind power generation. We're also number-three in total percentage of power generated by wind. So we are a huge wind state. And OSU, by the way, has a wind technology program, so this is that connection with OSU that we're, you know, working harder. This ultimately culminated in the site plan. So what you're looking at here is the site plan that we developed. What you're looking at is our block diagrams. These are general depictions of what we planned for Block 34. Ultimately, these are going to be architectural elements, so they're not going to be white boxes at the end of the day. We are still in the concept phase, so we don't want to get distracted by the lack of detail on this, because this is about getting conceptual landing on site plan. And I think one way to start getting a sense of how this works and the attraction that this is going to provide for downtown is imagine yourself standing on Ninth and Main, looking west towards the community center. And what you're going to see with this block is you're going to see, in the distance, you're going to see a water feature with a natural gas flame mixed in. And that's going to be eye-grabbing, and that's going to give the essence of Oklahoma and the energy. You're also going to see this grand market hall architectural feature from that corner. If you go walk down Main Street, let go shopping at Leonard's, or, you know, drop in for a drink or whatever, go to Ninth, go to Eighth and Main, and look over your shoulder back towards the community center, you're going to see sculptural wind turbines, and we're going to go elaborate that a little bit more. And you're also going to see an eye-catching performance stage. And these are going to be attractive. What we want this to do is we want this to draw people downtown. We want them to walk, come to Block 34, spend some time, then go over to Main Street and spend a lot of money. You know, that -- we see that as a good, powerful combination, all right? So from Eighth, if you're standing at the intersection of Eighth and Husband, if you look diagonally up through the structure, the market hall, which is the big structure to the southeast, that's going to frame the performance stage, because that bottom floor's going to be totally open. So when you're looking through, you're going to see the green space, you're going to see some landscaping, and you're going to see this architectural feature of the performance So what we tried to accomplish, one of the things we really wanted to do is we didn't want there to be a backside to this anywhere. We wanted this to be, look like you're looking at it from something that you want to go see from any direction. We wanted this to be visible and attractive from a distance, so. Underneath the green space is going to be a -- the vision is that's where your ground source heat pump well field is going to be. It lends itself perfectly for that. We talked to a local provider, and we've also talked to some experts in the field here, and there's plenty of room here to do a ground source heat pump well field to service the market hall. So it's a pretty good balance of area for well field and structure on-site, so that's all starting to come together. Around the perimeter, around the perimeter is going to -- the plan is to have utility bollards around so that food trucks or any other vendors can plug, whether you've got an art show going on, or you've got food trucks. All the way around the perimeter of this, they should be able to plug and get, with that generator's running. So we've got some opportunity to support that type of activity as well. You're going to hear a lot more about the market hall later. I think one thing to really kind of keep in mind is think of incubator, of a place for small businesses to grow and test out new products. It's a flexible floor plan, and you're going to hear a lot more about that in a minute when Russ and Vicki get up. One of the things we heard loud and clear in the town hall that was attended by about 80 people was that, "Whatever you do, make it like Guthrie Green." All right? Well, we heard that loud and clear, and that isn't actually how we got to where we got, but we were glad that that's what we ended up with. The overall block size is bigger than Guthrie Green. The green itself is similar in size. We have this landscape area on the shoulders of the Guthrie Green. There are going to be places for people to congregate and to enjoy and have some benches and enjoy some shade, and we're going to hear more about that. Ariel's going to speak to that in far more detail here in a minute. But we are right-sized. We like to believe that what we've done is we've right-sized the block, that there's a balance between the structure of the market hall and the performing stage, and that there's this kind of wonderful balance of natural elements plus the epitome of what Oklahoma is all about with an energy view. So that gives you some context of the comparison of this to Guthrie Green. Very similar offering, but more. We're Guthrie Green, but better, okay? So let me hand over the mic to Vicki -- Ariel, excuse me, and she will jump into the green space. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Ariel.
So I'm jumping right in here. Oh, sorry, we were already at green space. So the green space, both physically and sort of in our conception of the project, is the center. And we want it to do a lot of things. We want it to be beautiful. We would like it to be sustainable. As Jim said, the central green space area would serve multiple functions, including an area where there could be a ground source heat pump well field. That's a lot of words that I had to learn how to string together. But we could also have yoga, or tai chi, or croquet. It would be a seating area for the performance space. So a lot of our thinking was, how can these elements do more than one thing at a time? So you see some ideas here of landscaping that sort of inspired us. We want to have an open space, but also, if you go back here, these areas along the side, there would be smaller seating areas, larger seating areas. We heard some ideas at the public meeting about what people would like to do there, like they'd like to have a space where they could have a jam session. So, you know, a place where people could sit down and play, another place where people could sit and play chess, or drink coffee and read a book. Again, we want areas that fulfill multiple functions. The landscaping in general, we'd like it to be sustainable with year-round interest. We talked about sort of being inspired by the sensory garden at the Botanic Gardens, if you've been there. And engaging in general, which goes into this idea that we would like this to be sort of a playground without a playground. We want it to be a space that engages people of all ages, that engages them creatively, and is accessible to people of all abilities. So we're looking at ways to create play through landscaping that doesn't limit how you can And I think I'm sort of segueing into Vicki here, but we also want to think about how we can mix the natural elements with cultural elements. So I don't know if you -- anybody's heard about the Make It Rain poems down in Oklahoma City, which was created by a group called Short Order Poets. I know one of them. So I'm hoping they could do something like that, but it's -- they do these sort of applications on the sidewalk, and then when it rains, the poem suddenly appears. It's cool. And over to Vicki. Thanks.
Thank you, Ariel.
Hi. One of the things that was really fun about working on this project was really having a vision, thinking about what would be possible, and having a poem revealed in the rain, thinking about the many levels that you could experience the space and how it would welcome all walks of life, and not limiting the idea about play not being limited to the way we've thought about it before. And so with this idea, we looked for examples, just to give, stimulate further thought of how you would create rich-looking spaces, intriguing spaces that you might drive by. Visitors to Stillwater know nothing about us, know nothing about Block 34, would see something that would stimulate, wow. Not only daytime, but what would it be like at night? There's a whole nightlife, maybe other kinds we don't want to talk about, but there could be a nightlife. Many, maybe many of us have experienced, there's an artist named James Terrell that creates these outdoor-indoor spaces. And you sit in there, and at the time of day when the sun sets, lights come on. And these installations are all over the country, and people will just show up to watch the sunset, and it creates optical illusions, and it's really quite, it can be contemplative, it can be fun and imaginative. So we wanted you -- wanted us to kind of think about that it's not about just the daytime experience of Block 34 in downtown Stillwater, but what we think might be able to happen when the sun sets, or with the performance happening, with the performance stage. A key element, I think you may have assessed at this point, is this market hall. What is this market hall? What could, what does that bring? Many things. And what it looks like, we don't know yet. So you kind of hesitate to show pictures, and then you show pictures, because if you don't, those of us who are not visual thinkers are kind of lost. So imagine a building, a structure might be, it might have fabric walls, it might have, you know, it might be made out of brick. It could be almost anything. But it has two large spaces that are going to be restaurants, one that might appeal to adults, one that would appeal to families. There would be these kiosk or vendor spaces that we've talked about, which is, well, could we have some entrepreneurial spaces? Can we also teach people about natural resources, about Stillwater and its history by putting didactic panels, or maybe a vendor that, you know, talks about that it's an educational opportunity? Maybe there's someone who would live in this space that would draw people to a learning experience. You can fill in that blank. We don't have any preconceived ideas. So restrooms, and of course, not lots of natural light. And one of the aspects of this building is that there's a, our idea was that you'd have two wings and a covered space that could be indoor. So if you look at the left-hand side of your drawing, and your hand out or on the screen, you'll see that there's this cover outdoor space. That's so that you can see through. And on the opposite end, as Jim was describing to you, you see that there is the, the performance stage would be there. So there might be, let's just say there's a band playing, and you could see across from, you know, the neighboring areas, you could be looking through this space. You see first floor, second floor, different opportunities for who might live there and how that might work. You might have a restaurant in the covered space right there with a balcony that looks out over at the performance stage. So you can imagine, this could be a very dynamic space. It could be adjustable to the weather, to have some areas that might, you might have roll-up walls so that you'd be in and out. We talked about maybe a beer garden. I'm looking at Ariel. She had some really, I mean, a really fun thought about what would draw people to hang out and find this kind of the heart and soul. Russ, I'm going to ask you to join me on this next, starting with this next concept. So imagine that space that you pass through to go into the inside, could it be a light experience? Could the installation of that space be something like what you see on the right-hand side, where, you know, it lights up at night, and it's kind of directional, it could be a light show, it could be all kinds of things? But something surprising, an element of surprise perhaps for the person on the ground, you know, walking through the space.
I think it's important to know that the image on the left that you're looking at is actually an outdoor space, that, you know, it is, it's not hard to envision us making, doing some things that are relatively affordable, that can make a tremendous dramatic impact and stimulate the creativity of everyone who comes on block and wanders in space. And that's really our objective, is to make this a very, a very creative and stimulating space for anyone who steps on block.
So when we talk about the market hall, hospitality is the key element. What's going to drive people to want to hang out and be there? Their families to come in and spend time, you know, playing frisbee out on the, go from one activity into the next, maybe the performance that evening, and you have dinner that night? Or you bring your family and you have a picnic in the space?
Yeah, we think it's important to have, as you can see on the plan, at least conceptually, a couple of spaces for fixed hospitality catering to different markets. That's not only, we think, important to the community, but we also think it provides a source of sales tax revenue that can continue to maintain and continue to fund the ongoing upkeep of the space. However, I think it's also important to note that we don't want this space to be exclusionary or exclusive in any way. We want people to be able to bring a pic, feel just as comfortable bringing a picnic with their family and enjoying time on the green as someone who might come down and choose to enjoy a four-course meal, or whatever they choose, make a three-hour evening of it. It needs to be that broad, and that's specifically, when we go back to the goals, why we really wanted to make sure that it provided a sense of accessibility, not just physically, but just accessibility to all of our citizens so that it can be of value, so this investment can be of value to the maximum number of people.
And so you see on the slide here just some examples that the other layer, you know, if you look at many layers, it's that we will have food vendors, it could be the food trucks. We might have pop-up kiosks. This might be part of the entrepreneurial opportunity where people are trying out the latest coffee or whatever it is. That also allows for that creativity and accessibility.
I would love nothing better for Billy Goat Ice Cream to test drive all their new flavors right there.
So I'm going to leave you.
Okay. When it comes time to the performance stage, we know that that's very important, and, but at the stage we're at right now, where we're really just looking at it conceptually, we don't want to create too rigid of an image in our mind about that, but it's certainly not going to be a box. We envision this as something being composed of elements that are very natural to our context, being in north-central Oklahoma. We also want to make sure that architecturally, it blends and it flows with the materials and the forms and the structures of market hall. Yet, we also want it to be very flexible. So in all of these, it's not, it's not a mistake that you're able to see through these things. Again, we want visual passage from all angles to be accentuated. We want, if you're coming in off Duck on Eighth, we want you to be able to see through that stage area, no differently than if you're coming down Eighth or Ninth and entering off of Main Street. So visual passage is very important. So it could take a variety of forms. We don't think it needs to be huge, I can say that, so don't expect it to look like the photograph necessarily on the top-left of the screen in terms of size. But we thought that was a representative image of just a creative space, a simple architectural form that acts as, as it can hold all of the activities that we envisioned there. We also envisioned that there will be some sculptural elements, and with this, I'll pass back to Jim, because what we want to do is not only accentuate energy and resources, but we also want to tie into that kind of the sculptural elements. We believe, and in fact, these examples kind of tie those together, where in the upper-right, it might be a very artfully developed or designed wind turbine. It might be on the left, a wind turbine that is lit from below. And as I think Vicki alluded to earlier, we think the visual impact of this space at night is really important. We think that's what's going to give it a lot of attraction, a lot of dynamism. We think that's very, very critical. With that, Jim?
Return to you. All right. Well, one of the, as I kind of got on my soapbox earlier about energy in Oklahoma, I just think we'd be remiss not to, getting that message across and actually helping people learn more about what Oklahoma has to offer. And I can actually see this as being a big attraction. If we put this together well, I don't think the extra money is really going to be that significant, that an integrated system, a lot of buildings are using integrated systems now, ground source heat pumps, wind turbines, that they've already got the computer basis to manage that. Now we just get some screens where the public can actually watch what's happening. So I don't envision this to be a big investment, to actually create the opportunity to have some great educational opportunities. As I mentioned earlier, as you see some examples in the bottom-left-hand corner of your screen here, these are real things. You can buy these stuff now. So the technology of getting a natural gas flame coexisting with a fountain is actually existing technology. What can really be fun is the architectural freedom and maybe some competition for expression for coming up with some very interesting combination of water features and fire features. These things will be warmth in the winter. This will get back to the collection. Folks can come down here in the winter and sit around here and have like a campfire, sit around these flames. And in the summer, you've got the cooling of the water. So it's, we're getting these multiple benefits from these features that are offered around. And we're thinking of one big one in that corner, but we've talked about using these in pods within the landscaped area as well. Solar panels are getting amazing. They're used for shade structures as well as collectors you see on roof, so they're starting to get integrated architecturally. We can see a fully-integrated system. Chairman Swank came and talked to us a little bit about this, and he was very interested in helping us and working with us to do an integrated system that would be functional and educational. And we see that as an attraction. I can actually envision people coming from fairly good distances to come and see a fully-integrated system all in one block. You know, they get wind. I've done a little research on this, and to my knowledge, there isn't another example of this anywhere in the United States. There was another university in Michigan that had something that sort of resembled this, but to have a fully-integrated system that's got wind, solar, ground source heat pumps, all that in one place is very unique, and I think it's going to be a draw. I think people are going to come just to see that, and then they'll spend a lot of money on Main Street, so that'll be good, too. The, I've given you some examples, I mean, but it's, I The, I've given you some examples, I mean, but it's, I'm not, I don't want to be too flippant here, but it's not rocket science. This is how we control plants now. It's a computer screen. It's not a bunch of gauges anymore. It's computer screens with things that look like gauges. So this is how you can keep track of how much wind power is being generated, how much solar, et cetera. Just a quick visualization, the vision is to have a well field in the green space. That well field would be providing service to the Market Hall, winter and summer. The ground-source heat pump systems, as Dr. Bose said, there's a miracle that happens in the winter, and we're happy it does. And it's because these ground-source heat pump systems actually provide energy benefit, winter and summer. And they don't really, when you look at the actual kit, it just looks like the boxes you'd see in any furnace, right? No, no magic. This technology's been around for a while. It's just getting better and better and better. And reliability is, I think, well, I think Norm and me might even have one of these. It's been running for decades, right? So they can be phenomenally reliable and highly efficient. That's one of the big, big benefits to the ground-source heat pump system. What you're looking at here on the left is just showing you the kind of difference between winter and summer. This is a basement showing, you know, all the different kit. The other nice thing about ground-source heat pump systems is they allow decentralized distribution of the loops. So you can actually have a ground-source heat pump loop going through a building. You can have off-takes in various places. So your users can have different off-heating and cooling units spaced throughout the structure. So it's, they, it can provide a lot, again, this gets back to the plan. This is why you do proper planning on the front end. If you think about this before you build, then it's pretty easy to include all this stuff. What you're looking at here, this is an example of what a well field looks like under construction. It's just a bunch of tubes sticking out of the ground, sticking out of a hole that was just drilled. And it'd be covered over in its green grass at this point. Looking down on it, this is looking down onto a well. One of the thoughts is, we would have one well that would be an observation cell. And it would be, have like a plexiglass cover or glass cover, very thick, of course, so you can't fall through. And you can actually look down and see one of these wells from the top. And I gave an example here in the bottom-right-hand corner that shows, here's the temperature going in, and here's the temperature coming out. And that's quick lesson will say, "Ah, okay, now I understand what's going on. That heat transfer is happening below me in the ground." And so we thought that'd be, you know, very, very attractive and draw people to Stillwater. Now to the heavy lifting. All right, we are going to jump into funding, and this is Kevin. I need a microphone to you, server.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wasn't surprised today when Jim gave me the assignment of funding. I'm the one that kind of sticks out in this group. We've got Vicki and Russ and Ariel and Jim are creative design people. And my interests really moved toward the practical piece and the funding piece, and how are we going to pay for it? So that was a very enjoyable experience, except during breaks, I was kind of by myself, except for John and I sometimes. No, actually, they were excellent to me. But the funding piece, I guess the heavy lifting, as Jim stated, we've heard conceptual all evening long, and then that's going to continue in funding as well. This is early on, and it's a conceptual piece. The one thing, we looked at various areas of funding for this project, and we threw out multiple areas. One, geo-bonds. I've had some experience in trying to pass quality-of-life initiatives with geo-bonds, and that just is not going to work. I mean, and so we threw that to the side and said, let's focus on what really could work. What is the path to success? And the path to success for us was multifaceted phasing. So again, we're phasing in regards to the projects concerned. We're phasing in the funding of it as well. The three different phases to this, let me move this forward, I guess. Oh, I know, I'm on the right page. The planning phase. How do we fund the planning phase? I'm back. Oh, there's. Going too far forward. Is it? Okay. Thank you. So for the first phase, we need to figure out what we're going to do. Specifics on cost, specifics on design, and how do we, how do we fund that planning phase? We need to utilize, leverage the city of Stillwater, its talents and potentially treasures. We need to hire the right people, the right architects, to come up with the right cost structure, determine exactly where, what these facilities look like. So City of Stillwater being one of those pieces to the planning phase. Grants, we took a lot, Vicki has a lot of experience in grants. We looked at a lot of different areas there. Grants come into play a lot when you have educational opportunities on the site. So placemaking and art initiatives, there'll be grants associated with those. We also looked at smart energy initiatives in regards to grants. So felt like there were opportunities for the planning piece from the, from grants. There I go. The building phase, the construction phase. How do we get through that particular piece? TIF, the council knows a lot about TIFs and how that works. Ad valorem TIF, benefit by the value increase. This is going to be an economic driver for the community. So we're going to be bringing people into the, into the community, and we're going to be driving dollars into the community. So we're going to be raising the values of properties in the area as well. So a TIF for the area, an overlay TIF potentially, would be an opportunity to raise funds for the, for the, for the building phase. Sales tax as well, would be driving sales tax to the area. So opportunities to capture sales tax within the Market Hall specifically, the outdoor facilities specifically as well. But the sales tax piece would be an opportunity as well. We talked about grants, too, on the building phase. A lot of opportunities for grants for the placemaking and art initiatives. We talked about smart energy initiatives as well. We did have David Swank come visit with us from Central Rural Electric, you probably know that. He provided several different avenues that we could look at for, for grants with innovative innovation point. We'll talk about that in a little bit as well. Oh, funding accessible via innovation point. That was the David Swank piece I mentioned before. Philanthropic sources. I've had a lot of experience in that, and I do feel like there is motivation in the community to bring something special to Stillwater, to bring, to bring our elements together, cultural, downtown, educational, together. And I do feel like there's some opportunities from philanthropic sources for the construction piece. Private equity from individuals or organizations. Private equity, you may know what that is, but part of this is going to be traditional debt. We'll talk about that here in just a bit. But private equity really is folks that expect to get their money back. It's an investment, but they put their money into a project early on. It's the 20% down, if you will, or 15% down, or whatever that number is. And then they will get paid on the back end, after the traditional debt gets paid on a monthly basis or an annual basis, or at the very back end when the debt's paid off. That's when the private equity fund gets paid back. So that we felt like was an opportunity. We've seen some examples of that. Traditional debt, that's what I do. And we, we will talk a little bit about the revenue-generating pieces of the elements. But as long as there is a prospectus that shows that there is a projected income, there is ways to finance that construction. We see it all the time. Oftentimes, needs to be leases in place, or income source is already stabilized. But there is opportunities for traditional debt and funding the project. The operational phase. So once we've, we've planned it, we've constructed it, now we're moving forward to the operation of it. The lease and rent from the Market Hall space. It's been mentioned several times, but the Market Hall piece is critical to the funding, to this project getting done. It needs to have retail that's generating income for lease purposes. It needs to be vibrant, it needs to be multifaceted. The Market Hall is the key piece to this as far as the construction is, or the cost is concerned. Venue rental, so we have outdoor facilities where the performance stage, where there'll be a revenue coming in from that. And so those are the sources that we can identify as well. Sales tax from on-block activities. So if you bring a kiosk in, or businesses in, they're transitional in nature, you can bring in income from those as well, those that set up shop there for short periods of time. You have on-block activities for sales tax. Visit Stillwater, I saw Christie here this evening. But we do feel like it is going to be economic driver for the community. So we're going to bring people into town, heads in beds, as Christie would say. And so partnership with Visit Stillwater, we think, would be, would be likely, or at least an avenue we want to pursue. In-kind, we have great companies here in town and individuals that have talents and resources that could provide in-kind benefit to Block 34. So we felt like there was opportunities there going forward, resources both educationally and in actual substance. And grants and philanthropic purposes, we've talked about that already before, but we do feel like there's a lot of opportunities there. A lot of heavy lifting, as Jim mentioned there, but that's, that would be an avenue we would pursue. Now turn back over to Jim as far as the cost summary is concerned.
Speaking of cranking up the volume, I'm actually going to take liberties here, and my team members may be throwing something heavy at me in about one second. But I feel like this may be a good time to do a bit of a, kind of a wrap-up, visual wrap-up, and then jump to that table. Kevin, Kevin mentioned heads in beds, and I just talked about cranking up the volume. One of the things I didn't speak to when I talked about scale and usage is that, you know, we just went through an ice rink project, and I got a lot of lessons on how ice rinks operate and how difficult that is, and I totally get that. But what we wanted to do is, are there things we could do in the design phase to accommodate such things, whether it's an ice rink or not? But really, the users need to be involved, and we would certainly engage them in the design phase to make sure we have got that accommodated. Because ultimately, a good design is one that serves the needs of the users and the operators. And just to set the scale, we talked about Guthrie Green, but the other thing I wanted to point out, that gray piece right there is roughly the size of the ice rink. So if you wanted to know kind of how big the ice rink is. And so there are some things we might do on the front end, and whether it's an ice rink or not. I would argue that maybe the ground-source heat pump system could actually enable a more efficient ice-forming method. I'm actually talking to a professor at OSU right now who's got some ideas about using ice for energy storage. So there might be some kind of really interesting things we can do with ice and energy storage. But, you know, the Stillwater Community Center is getting ready to help sponsor, is in the process of putting on a Blues Festival. And we see this venue being absolutely fantastic for those kind of performances. And if we can get multi-day events, which the Blues Festival is going to be in April, that's heads in beds. So, you know, Red Dirt Music Festival, you know, Bluegrass Gospel. I mean, we've got a fantastic downtown venue. We've got theaters, we've got stages, and we're going to have this outdoor theater to accommodate that. Another citizen actually brought up a really great idea, and he mentioned three-on-three basketball. And I did some quick checking, and actually, a three-by-three-on-three basketball court fits right there. So you could have the finals tournament literally sitting just 15 feet across from your table that's got a few beers and a few Cokes on it. So we just see this as being a really powerful venue to attract a lot of people to Stillwater. But as we, Kevin mentioned, nothing's for free. We talked about funding, we really didn't talk about numbers. And the third deliverable we had, actually, it was our second deliverable, we're not bringing it up until now, which is cost. So you need to get out your checkbooks now, and we'll just get this done. No, not quite that easy, and we realize that. We, we're speaking in ranges here. If you look at where we are in the project process, we're in the concept phase. And numbers are in ranges. It would be imprudent and improper for us to actually provide a hard number right now because there's been no detailed design work done. Sadly, I've worked for a lot of people that never really kind of got their head around that. But that's the next phase, and that's, the next slide is actually going to speak to that a little more detail. So what we, what you're looking at on this table is a range. The range of cost for the Market Hall structure actually is, is what we call a kind of like a white box finish. So except for the restaurant, the vision is that the restaurants would build out their, the hospitality would build out their own space in detail. So this is a high-level cost estimate based upon the square footage of the concept we have right now. Okay? That Market Hall size could, you know, balloon out or get a little smaller. Our vision, maybe this, this is the right size. But HVAC system, we've got a loose number in here, one to $2 million. Performance stage, again, a very wide range. We talked about, I mean, there's materials you're going to use. How big is it going to be? What materials are you going to use? What kind of detail and finish? That's the next phase. We're in the concept phase, that's the next. So these are the range, cost range. Landscaping, again, a broad range, half a million to a million. And then other support infrastructure. You know, you think about lights, and you think about the bollards we talked about on the perimeter to serve the food trucks. So that is, that captures those ancillary-type infrastructure requirements that we have. Everything to the right of the cost numbers is just a recapturing of what Kevin just went through. So this was our attempt to kind of get it all on one table. So this is, this is the culmination slide of the cost and the funding on one table. So you've seen our presentation. That is our vision, view, thoughts for Block 34 with respect to site plan, with respect to costing, with respect to financing and funding. That was our, that was our charge. So arguably, what we're about to do next is beyond our charge, but we felt like we'd be imprudent if we didn't do it. So we're going to do it. So we want to go on. We want to take this forward. We would like for you to give us permission to take this forward. And that's what we're asking, to allow this task force to continue doing what we've been doing. We're going to need some money. We don't know what that's going to be yet, but we're going to need some money to get through that. One of the things I didn't mention, I should have mentioned, and I'm going to do it now, is that thanks to the help of the city, Sparks Reed helped us, provided us architectural support throughout this process. We recognized early on that we needed some professional help, and they showed up and have been doing some great work for us and really kept, keep us focused, and also kept our, opened us and closed us, kind of kept us on track and doing what we needed to do to move along here. So we felt very, very fortunate to have them. The city staff's been great, we're going to need more of them. I mean, you can't get through that next phase without more city staff help. They, it's been, and one of the things we didn't talk about up until now is what does the operational structure look like? It's been a very loose conversation up to this point. But ultimately, what is the entity that operates? What is the entity that owns? We didn't, that's, we didn't do that. That is something that needs to be worked and developed in the next stage, we contend. So we're asking for permission to charge ahead and get that shaped up. We've got a bit of a timeline issue, and it's an opportunity. I don't want to say we're, you know, it's the end of the world. But we've got a great opportunity. At the end of February, there's a developers' conference in Dallas. And that would be a fantastic opportunity for us to get a pitch book to them. And that's the end of February. So we're asking for approval to get that cooked up and in a fashion that will pull in a bunch of great development ideas with a lot of money. We'd like to seek grant funding. We don't, we need, we would like to have the authority to work with the city. And Vicki's been hugely helpful. I mean, there's probably some partnership with OSU and others to do great things on Block 34, and that's in the, interestingly enough, there's a lot of grant money available for the planning phase. So it's not always bricks and mortar. They actually have, there's actually grants out there to help with the planning and development phase, as well as the operational phase, not just bricks and mortar. So we're, you know, got our eyes on those things. Kevin was right to point out to Jim, there's just, there's too much for us to do. I totally agree. Because this next phase, the work level, the amount of work just starts, you know, growing tremendously. And so there's going to need to be work teams. There's going to have to be focus groups that focus on the performance stage, focus on the landscaping, to get dig deeper on the grants. You know, you might have a team working on grants. So you can imagine multiple sub-teams working on these different work areas to progress this thing. And the other is project manager, how are we going to manage the project? And the other is project manager, how are we going to manage the project? It's critically important that that's understood early. Based upon my experience, you want to get a project management organization in place early. We've been filling that need up until now, kind of collectively as a task force. I'm not suggesting that you necessarily need to hire a project manager, per se, but there needs to be someone, some person that has at least a project coordination responsibility to loosely say herd the cats, amongst other things, through this next phase. And the best solution is you have a team that carries it all the way through. I just know from my project experience that one of the great failures in projects is switching horses in the middle of the stream, and by the continuity of personnel, you at least can be more efficient and arguably deliver a better product at the end of the day with that. So, that's our ask, that's our recommendation, and with that, we are open collectively, right? Yes, we are open collectively to questions.
Okay, so I'm going to open it up to councilors, but I just have to say, it was hard to sit here and not stand up and cheer. I was so excited. This is great. This is great, and all of the different ideas, and I will say my things later. So, I'm going to open it up to city councilors. Who wants to go first?
First of all, for us, I'm blown away by the amount of work in 12 meetings that you have put together, such a concise, and, you know, it was a little daunting to sit down and see how many pages were in this PowerPoint, but all the pages flowed well. I think, for me, it was a plan that encompassed everything that we envisioned this block to be, with some wonderful elements of things that we have seen have done well in other places, but we created what was good for Stillwater, and we did that with the energy, the educational elements, and that's what I am pleased to see, because I think that's what's important. We found what was good for Stillwater. As someone who was a former business owner downtown, who now lives downtown, I like the fact that I don't see it being something that's going to compete with what's already there. It's actually going to move seamlessly, and I think will provide a wonderful opportunity for dynamics to happen in downtown Stillwater that hasn't happened before. I love the fact that what you did create on this block allows for funding sources that would help make those things come true, because some of the most daunting things that are amazing thoughts, they're wonderful to think about, but then you get to the funding side of it, and you're thinking, how is that going to happen? So, I appreciate that you did create some funding sources and avenues and possibilities to go along with those things, and I commend you on that. I speak for myself when I say that I don't want it to end. I think the right people are on this committee, and so I'm looking forward to seeing what can be created next, and so you have my full support on that. So, thank you very much for what you created tonight.
Vice Mayor.
I'm really excited, too. Thank you very much, and I imagine you've listed 12 meetings. Those were probably formal meetings. I bet that the informal meetings go exponentially.
We're not allowed to have several open hours.
Well, just like, let me call somebody. Oh, John.
We don't have that.
No, just the phone calls you had to make, the phone calls, to people not on the committee. Right. A ton of work, and really appreciate that. You have gone way out there, and it is exciting to see the different possibilities that are there, and I just can't wait to get started. I would love for you to continue, and I hope that we can work out the details of doing that in a continued, efficient, and creative way.
Counselor Joyce.
This is great. Thank you all very much for your work. This is the detailed kind of work that we've kind of had general conversations about over the last year or two, and tried to say, well, we'll come here, and you guys have definitely brought more focus to that, and brought a much clearer vision of what can be done here. I think, you know, a lot of the elements that I saw that I really liked to see, I loved that idea of sort of having a visual pass-through, sort of wherever you look at it, you see through it. It doesn't block things out. It creates a continual sort of space, right, one that doesn't end. I like the idea of open play space. I saw Dr. Washington over there, and I thought of the Wonderatorium and their concept of playing with what you have, kind of, you know, creating play wherever it is. We don't have to have a formal play structure of some kind, that we can create a space that is fun to play in regardless of what's there. I like the concept of the market hall and the possibilities there. So, all of that's great in terms of vision, in terms of what you all presented. I like all that. The energy tie-ins, too. I mean, that's absolutely what Counselor Doolington said about bringing funding sources, you know, incorporating sorts of things where companies and businesses in town say, hey, we do that kind of stuff. We can get involved. So, I'm going to get to the end of the presentation and sort of figure out. I want to see more work done here. I also see City of Stillwater listed a lot of places on the funding report, and I don't know what that means or where that comes from. You know, I think there are some possibilities in terms of moving forward, but I guess my core question, you know, will be, what does that next step take in terms of investment from the city? You know, at what point do we have to start writing checks? And, you know, given that we don't really have checks to write for this at this point, kind of planning, figuring out what that actual, when does money start needing to be spent, and where does that money come from, you know, I think is my big question, because I love all this, and I want you guys to go forward, you know, but what does that look like from a hard dollar standpoint? Much do we need to be able to come up with, or where do we find that money so that we can move on to those next steps? That's question one, and I don't know if you guys want to address that, or if that's sort of a more discussions needed kind of question for the committee, or if you have another comment there.
More discussion needed.
Okay.
My other question, then, I guess at this point, is, you know, I know there was a lot of community involvement in your meetings, and a lot of folks that came and made comments, and I'd love to hear maybe just some overview of what you heard, just in terms of what the community about this idea in general, what, you know, what did they like, what were they asking for at these meetings? What was some of the sort of general feedback you heard from the community in terms of this space and the use of this space?
I think Jim summarized this very well. What we heard from the meeting were three things: Guthrie Green, Guthrie Green, Guthrie Green. And I don't mean that flippantly, really. I mean that as it is one of the most accessible touchpoints to the kind of cultural amenity, the kind of activity hub that that has become in downtown Tulsa, we heard that you'd be surprised at the number of people who use that as their reference point, and when they saw the general conceptual plan that we were playing with, they, many said, yes, we like that because, and then they'd make the obligatory Guth reference again. So, we did have a lot of input, but it goes along with what you were saying, and that is, the unstructured play needs to be something for a wide variety of citizenry, not just a few, regardless of what, I mean, there ought to be something for everyone, and we took that input very clearly. A lot of citizen input about the performance stage, the need for that to be very flexible. We had envisioned a range of activities that might occur on that stage, and we had people who suggested, oh, no, you're missing three or four more. So, we list grew, and thus, it's important in its size, and so in the actual design phase, we'll need to get that list out and really make sure that the architects really take that to heart and that we handle all those requirements. So, I would say the bulk of the input, particularly at the citizens' meeting, did have to do with, it was input that was resonant with our thinking, which we felt good about, and we took that as reinforcement that what, at least the citizens represented that evening at that meeting, really were excited about creating a physical space in, down in the center of our, it really does act as the social, cultural, and kind of psychological hub.
Thanks.
Counselor Wedlock.
Yeah, so, I mean, I won't belabor any points that have already been mentioned, but I got to say that I was blown away by your presentation. I was a little skeptical at first. That's just the selfishness in me, saying, well, what can they do that I can't do? Well, I think you've proven tonight quite a lot, quite a lot. So, I applaud the efforts put forth tonight. This is so far out of anything I even expected tonight. You knocked it out of the park. I liked everything I saw on this, and I think that your ideas as far as a cultural hub for Stillwater closely align with what we have up here on the council. And so, it was refreshing to see that those ideas, as far as this concept phase go, kind of aligned with what I think that, you know, we had. I also agree with Counselor Joyce's comments that, you know, this is very exciting. It's easy to get wrapped up in all of this. From a practical standpoint, you know, what's the next step? What's the most appropriate or responsible step to move forward? Again, I think you guys have shown yourselves very capable to continue this journey and move forward, because it is going to come down to the brass tacks at some point, and the excitement's going to be there, but how do we get it done? And more to the point, how do we pay for it? It was interesting to see the ideas of how to mix concepts and kind of marrying that to grants and funding avenues, something, again, that I honestly didn't even think about. So, I think at the very least, you guys have proven yourselves the right group. I think we chose wisely, and I'm all for moving forward on this and giving over some more reins to you guys. So, the only other thing that I would say that was kind of glossed over and not mentioned a whole lot, but I was happy to see that the perimeter parking was left intact, because that is something that we have heard some concerns about. Local businesses have echoed some concerns about taking away some of that parking, so that's something that, moving forward, I would like to see some focus on as well. But, I'll say this, one heck of a start, so.
Okay, and I'm just going to say a few things. I'm not going to, I agree with everybody up here. Nighttime staff, love it. Love it so much. The multiple function, the way that you, your thought processes, and the way five of you came together to think of just little details that mean so much. The no limits on play, awesome. Market hall, great. It's stimulating, yet it looked, and it's just in my mind, just like it's in your mind, but it's serene, too, and I love that. Love the green space. Love that you combined all of the energy. I think that's great, and the grants, of course. I loved the ice equal energy storage, just things like that that most of us wouldn't even think about. That's, it's just great that you went to that place, and we're thinking about the little details. So, I think you heard from everybody else, you've already got them with me. It makes a perfect 10. This is what I wanted to do all night. That applause is for the five of you. You've done an outstanding job, but I do want to address one thing, and it is the park. We don't want to leave anything unsaid here that we could, that we know a little bit more about, and I know someone who knows a little bit about the parking. Mr. McNichol, please speak about that.
Well, it was not in the charge of the task force to examine parking in the area. However, members of the task force expressed concern about that, and there is work ongoing to, at this very moment, to be able to replace that parking, and the number of spaces, I think, that end up in 90-something, 94.
94 loosely, which adds about 12 spaces to the perimeter of what we have right now. So, within the concept alone here, we've added about 12 spaces.
Right, and the alternatives that we are exploring would more than replace what was there. So, that's not something that's been ignored. There's ongoing work in that, and so we want this to be an area that drives development, that drives attendance, and although I also know we want people to show up on their bicycles and on foot and that kind of thing, we realize that if they're still stuck in their cars, we'll continue to drive them. So, we recognize that. We're working on it. We think we have a plan.
And I think to piggyback a little bit on that, one of the things that, if we're going to have more people, then making sure that the transportation makes sense, that the boats, you know, there's different opt-to-get-there, whether it's by foot, whether it's by bike, and that we pay attention to those traffic patterns, and that for those of us who have lived in Stillwater for a very long time, we get used to things in a certain way, and this is going to change that, and we need to be open to that and understand that that means that there are some things that will need to change, and that's okay. You do that when things are growing and doing well. We certainly don't want to penalize anyone who's doing any sort of mode of transportation to get down there. I just want to make sure that the flow makes sense for that area if we're going to generate that much additional.
I think it definitely was not your task, your assignment, but it's also hope that as you go forward and you form your teams, that we're able to begin to think of more than Block 34. You know, we just can't do this in a bubble. It has to be connected to the rest of the city, and especially to the things that are so close to the community. And I, you know, I'm kind of like, oh, let's see, ground source synergy for the community center, or how do we see this lovely block in the context of the entire downtown, entire city?
Counselors, anything else? Mr. Dorman, do we vote on this?
You actually created the task force with a resolution, so my recommendation would be that we prepare a resolution for your next meeting that would basically lay out this frame, tell them to go to the next step. I'll start preparing a document and circulating it here in the next couple of days, and we'll be ready to go at the next available council meeting.
Okay, so we have given them permission. Thank you for volunteering for more. With our deepest gratitude, truly, we thank you for your time and your effort, and I'm speaking on behalf of all of us. Just, I think, I would just, I want to stand up and applaud you and shake your hands. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
If a motion, a second to adjourn, please vote. Thank you for, everybody for coming, and with a vote of five to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you all so much.